Selectmen Regular Meeting for January ninth. It's six oh one and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the Republic, the Constitution, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, we always start with public audience. And um, if someone would like to come up to the podium, you have five minutes. And you will be timed and I will stop you at five minutes. Um, Joan? Yep, Joan.
Joan Coe, twenty-six Whitcomb Drive. At the December twelfth, two oh oh two Board of Selectmen meeting, many of the board members orchestrated a vitriolic response to my public audience comments against their policy not to respond to comments from the public. All of the nonsense of attacking the messenger is more of the same tactics used to protect Town Manager Maria Capriola from public criticism. When Town Manager Maria Capriola was called out for asking the past town planner to change her performance evaluation from excellent to poor to make a case for terminating an employee, the board was silent. Truth to power is always confrontational. It comes with the territory. The first member of the Board of Selectmen to challenge my comments was First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis, although she was aware that my comments were true after her alleged conversations with various members of the public. First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis on December twelfth during the bike ordinance hearing allowed Julian Caulfield, a student from Simsbury High School and is the daughter of Jen Caulfield, Chairman of the Police Commission, was allowed to speak twice during the hearing when I was not allowed to speak twice at the marijuana hearing when I asked to finish my comments at the end of the hearing, uh, of the end of the hearing comments. First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis has decided that some people have more weight than others depending on connections with political machines. This is not equal justice for all, as spoken at every meeting from pledging to the flag. First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis received ten thousand dollars of tax dollars to represent all residents, not a special few. First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis should not be nominated as First Selectman. Board Member Sean Askam is another political operative who will sell his soul to the devil if he could remain elected to the Board of Selectmen. Sean Askam in an email to Town Manager Maria Capriola wrote, quote, "You always make me look smart", with his backdoor private conversations with Maria Capriola. Sean Askam has been privy to many issues in town throughout his tenure and has knowingly voted against the truth. Sean Askam should not be nominated to the Board of Selectmen. Board Member Eric Wellman is another political operative who has lied to the public and staff during his failed campaign for state representative. Eric Wellman held a campaign rally at Simsbury Meadows without a public gathering permit in violation of the policy that he approves for all organizations. This is one of many Pinocchios he received with his false accusations. At the November twenty-eight, twenty-second Board of Selectmen meeting, Eric Wellman was willing to come to the defense of Town Planner George McGregor without any investigations into my allegations that a large taxpayer on a visit to Town Planner George McGregor's office to discuss the situation in four forty-two Hop Meadow Street was asked to leave when George McGregor became unhinged. Eric Wellman stated that he spoke to many stockholders in town and has had nothing but rave reviews on George McGovern's professionalism. Eric Wellman lost the election to the position of State Representative due to his failure to interact and converse with large taxpayers in town. Most of the signs during Wellman's failed campaign for state rep on the business community's properties were for Melissa Osborne due to his neglect to interact with the business community, another Pinocchio. Eric Wellman should not be nominated to the Board of Selectmen. On December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Selectmen were given a submission developed by Town Planner George McGovern to approve a revised job description of the assistant town planner and code compliance officer and change the job title to Community Planner. The summary states, quote, "The purpose of the amendment, which are budget neutral as they do not propose any changes to step grade pay or allow more flexibility and functionality in duty assignment based on the experience and qualifications of department staff", end quote. This appears to be a union labor violation and a substantive change to the job description. Past town planners with professional knowledge of community and state law do not need substantive changes to the job description. These changes to the job description were instituted with the approval of Town Manager Maria Capriola to give cover to the town planner George McGovern for its inadequacies by passing the buck. All these substantive changes were not given to the union rep prior to being placed on the agenda for a vote. This is another failure of management. I have the link to the SCTV December twelfth meeting and all of my comments we post on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else here for public audience?
Dr. Michael Williams, nine sixty-five Hop Meadow Street. I'm a dentist here in town. I spoke recently at the last um, Selectmen meeting based on cannabis. I felt the need to come back tonight because I had an occurrence last week watching the simple news about cannabis. The state is now, I believe tomorrow, dispensaries are going to be open. Last week, all the newscasters were up in arms over the amount of packaging for cannabis that addresses youth. I have two examples. Being an adult child once, we all know what Chips Ahoy are, a bag of cookies. If you go to a cannabis dispensary, you will find that it's not going to be Chips Ahoy, it's Trip Ahoy. Same packaging as chocolate chip cookies. Example number two. Being a dentist, I need to be careful. Warheads, candy. If you go to a dispensary, you will find something called Stoneheads. Looks exactly like the candy Warheads. It's a simple answer to a simple question. Do we want our children to be subject to this? You can tell me that cannabis is for adults. There's no way you will ever control that. You can give me revenues, you can give me studies, and I've listened to very intelligent people get up here and give you a lot to think about. And I couldn't help when I was watching the news. You can do all the studying that you want. It comes down to one simple question. Is it good for this town? Do we need that revenue based on this? Let another town have that joy. Please prevent us from having that episode to deal with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lori Staub, uh, four forty Firetown. Um, I'll just be really quick. It is not the town's job to parent your children. I'm a parent myself. How many of you take medication? How many of you have alcohol in your homes? Do you keep those under lock and key? It is not the town's job to parent your children, talk to your children. Keep things locked up. Keep things away from your children. It's not for them.
That's all I have to say. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. I've attended or watched online all of the various board and commission meetings on the subject of our town condoning the sale of marijuana. Those that I couldn't attend in person, I watched in line, online. Several I watched back more than once. Marijuana is an illicit drug that is a Schedule One substance under the Controlled Substances Act. Both the DEA and FDA have recently rejected petitions to change this classification because marijuana is, and I quote from the DEA and the FDA, "A substance that has a high potential for abuse, no currently accepted medical use in treatment in the United States, and a lack of accepted safety for use under medical supervision." This is from the DEA and the FDA. I do realize that the state of Connecticut has created legislation legalizing the use and sale here, but it is still illegal federally. After listening to all of the public audience and sidebar conversations, I'm left with just one question. Why is this even something the town is considering? What would be a single reason for allowing a recreational, not medical, recreational retail store in this town? The vast majority, almost exclusively really, of people who spoke in favor cited medical reasons. They gave heartfelt testimonies. I am sympathetic to all that they had to say about people with cancer or wasting syndrome or mental health or substance abuse disorders, but they were all medical and there are already stores for them to obtain product legally. We're looking at a recreational drug dealing retail outlet for people who want to chill out and get stoned. Why? Why would we even think about doing this? This is a town who didn't send their children to school full-time for a full year to protect them from COVID when children were largely unaffected, but we did it for the benefit of the community. We all wore masks for a full year to prevent others from getting sick. But we're thinking about putting a store in that deals in a federally illegal substance? This makes no sense. We heard over a half hour of testimony from the owner of the two most prominent cannabis businesses in Connecticut, when, by the way, residents were only given three minutes, outlining all of the safety precautions required by law about the thickness of the concrete required to prevent break-ins to the facility, the armored vehicles needed to deliver product, and the security guards needed, as well as the opaque windows so nobody could see who was inside in a holding room between the entrance and the back, no product visible. Why do they have all those? Because it's a dangerous substance. We just heard at the police commissioner meeting that we needed more police officers and an additional SRO for our schools. So why would we even think about allowing the sale of an illegal substance in this town? The zoning board asked more questions about and turned down a request for a deviation for sign colors on a coffee shop, but we have spent hours and hours and hours considering allowing the use of recreational marijuana and the sale of it in this town. I cannot fathom why any rational adult in their right mind would even entertain this, much less approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Williams, seventeen North Canton Road. I apologize, I forgot my written thing at home, but um, I echo what Lori said. I also really feel like this town could spend a whole lot more time on economic development in a different direction than dealing with cannabis that was brought to us for financial reasons. We have enough alcohol in our town creating a problem and we can't get a handle on that, so I'm not really sure why we want to bring in a dispensary. The dispensary itself, how it's made, I've listened on the, or how they organize it in their store, I've listened to the SCTV tapes about it. It's not really the problem, it's really the users and what that means. Because you know, along with alcohol, there's going to be irresponsible people. You know with guns, there's great people who respect the gun laws, but there's irresponsible people. And those irresponsible people are the reason laws get made and get changed. And I, I just think it's another layer of us to be concerned about the health and well-being of our community, the youth of our community, um, that we don't need. We're adding one more layer that has more consequences than good. So I, I really feel, strongly urge you to consider throwing this proposal out, letting other towns deal with it. Let them have the benefit. Let's put our economic development into something that's going to really benefit this whole community. The little bit of revenue we get that's so restricted in how we spend it isn't going to make that much of a difference in Simsbury. We've passed referendums with low voter turnout on bigger numbers than what we're going to get from revenue from this proposal, so. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Please consider what I've asked of you and um, I, I really want to have a healthy community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, we'll move on to the First Selectmen's report. Thank you guys for coming, for speaking. You're welcome to stay. Um, I do want to acknowledge that it's National Law Enforcement Day. Thank you Heather for coming to cut out to me. I did see it later on, all over social media. And this is a day dedicated to showing our support for law enforcement at the local, state and federal levels. I want to thank, um, or I'm thankful for our PD who are, who are here working to keep us safe and continue to serve a dedication and community spirit. And the referendum passed um, on Saturday. Thanks for everybody that came out. Special thanks to all the poll workers who were here to make that happen. And I think there was close to nine hundred people that voted with a majority voting to pass both items. Um, I'm sure people have noticed the progress of the kinetic, the East Coast Greenway out on Route one eighty-nine. If you drive out there, um, it's going to connect Simsbury to Bloomfield. Bloomfield has a beautiful bike path that I don't know how far it goes, but it goes into Bloomfield and it's going to keep going. And I think this is a really exciting stage for um, our community. Uh, we were lucky to be included in that CROG study to help fund some of this and there's a few pieces that are left to this trail puzzle that we'll be working on this coming year. Cannabis, I think I'll just save my comments on cannabis till we get to that agenda item. I just have a few comments there. And then what I also included in my First Selectmen's report are the um, dates for the upcoming budget process, so everybody can see when there's meetings. You know, when Maria works, she's working with the departments, but then she presents it to us. We have the police commission here tonight. We will have our tri-board meeting on the seventeenth next Tuesday, which is a fascinating night for anybody who wants to come to that, um, and so on and so on. Um, a big thank you to the emergency management team that went into action on the twenty-third, I think it was, right before Christmas. Um, Mike Berry is the team lead with Maria Farmington Valley, Farmington Valley Fire, no Farmington Valley, Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company, SB. Chief Baldus and others um, who worked really hard to get people's power back and people back to normal to be able to have Christmas, so a big thank you there. Um, as we've seen in the press recently, there's a big emphasis on safe driving and pedestrians. Um, a few towns have been taking up task force and with the sad news of Quentin Williams, the state legislator who was um, sworn into office on Wednesday and was tragically killed by a wrong-way driver. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wrong-way crashes that have been going on, um, so I'm just kind of keeping a note in here to please, no distracted driving, just drive carefully. And then um, I included the link to the CCM, which is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Legislative Agenda, which was voted on at the end of the um, convention and tomorrow we're meeting with state legislators and states reps and senators at the Armory to kind of go over what these are. Oh, I also want to point out that Maria and I met with our new state rep and new state Senator Melissa Osborne and Lisa Seminar to talk about priorities in CCM. It seemed like a good meeting. We're going to try to meet quarterly and then um, that's it. Stop talking. I'm going to turn it over to Maria.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items I quickly wanted to point out under our coronavirus update. Um, following the holidays, we have received a few inquiries um, regarding uh, COVID at-home test kits and whether or not the town still had some. Um, at this time, we don't have any remaining kits for general distribution left for the uh, public, but the federal government is offering um, folks to go online and uh, each household is eligible for an additional four free kits. Um, so I have put that link um, uh, in my report this evening. Um, also, I believe our schools, um, do you still have a small number available um, for the school nurses office? So if you do have a student in our school and uh, you need to access um, a COVID test kit for your student, um, that's another way to obtain a kit. Um, and also um, most insurance companies um, uh, have reimbursement forms online, so if you are insured, um, there was part of the federal legislation, I believe from a year or so ago, um, that provides for free reimbursement. I believe it's up to eight kits per insured person per month. Um, and that's a relatively easy, I think, reimbursement process. So I just wanted to make sure that folks are aware of some of those different options that were available if you were looking to access free kits at this time. Um, just one other quick item of note, um, is that the community transmission level, um, as the CDC defines, um, did go from medium to high here in Hartford County, um, with the most recent report. Um, so their recommendations are slightly different for folks in terms of um, mask wearing and things of that nature. So I did put updated links on for that information in the report as well. Uh, just a few items under Department News and Notes. Um, for Culture Parks and Recreation, we do have an upcoming um, public state session, uh, which will be on Monday, January sixteenth from twelve thirty to two thirty. Uh, and then we have some uh, appointment news um, from Finance and our Assessor's Office more specifically. Uh, we have Stacy Bonbini, who uh, will be our new Assessor's Aid in that office. Um, she has ten years of experience in the private sector, specifically working in the car industry. Um, we really think that her knowledge of motor vehicles will be an asset to her in that new role of us. So she'll be starting on January seventeenth and we just want to wish her well. Uh, in our Building Division of the Planning Department, Timothy Gauthier started as our Deputy Building Official on December twelfth. Um, he had about seven years of experience as an Assistant Building Official for another Connecticut community and has also owned his own carpentry business. Um, he has been licensed as a building official in Connecticut since twenty fifteen. Um, we're really excited to have him on board. He's a welcome addition, so welcome to him. For Public Works, uh, we wanted to announce that Kurt Danowski was recently promoted to Senior Crew Leader for our Highway Division. Um, that happened during around Thanksgiving. Um, Kurt has been with us for forty years. Um, he's just a really remarkable uh, employee. He has numerous certifications. Uh, he's just a true asset to the department, so we're really excited for him, um, for the new role that he took on in November. And we also had a new truck driver hire in, uh, hire in Public Works, Chris Hagnow, was recently hired. Uh, he will be specifically working in our Highway Division. Um, he has had five years of experience as a maintainer at Bradley International Airport, including plowing snow, so a lot of relevant experience. That comes in handy at this time of the year for sure. Um, and his first day will be on January seventeenth, so welcome in advance to Chris. And then um, similar um, to our First Selectmen's report, I did also just include a link um, to our referendum results. Um, we did, uh, both questions did pass overwhelmingly around eighty-five percent of the vote of those who participated uh, in the referendum. And again, just many thanks to our registrar, our staff, our town clerk's office, uh, really just to everybody who made that uh, event go particularly well and very smoothly. So thank you to folks who gave up a Saturday for that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, um, so we move on to the Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. I'm going to start to my right, Chris Peterson. Did anything? Eric? Amber?
I have a couple of updates um, from the uh, Senior Center. The first is that on Wednesday, February fifteenth, from one to one forty-five, at the Simsbury Public Library will be the first of our memory cafes. Uh, these are um, where seniors can come and share their stories. That particular day will be sharing stories of memorable snow days and snowstorms here in Simsbury. Uh, this is um, this event is a social gathering for people that are starting to experience some memory loss or early-stage dementia or cognitive impairment. Not all of these um, events will be geared towards, towards that community, but that's um, the community for this one. We're already getting registrations, um, and you need to register by February thirteenth. And I'd like to say that this program um, is being funded by the two thousand twenty-two AARP Connecticut Livable Communities Grant that we received um, recently. So we're really excited that we're able to start using that grant money right away and, and sharing and capturing these stories. Uh, the second uh, note is that the AARP Tax Aid will be um, at Simsbury Public Library. These are in-person meetings where uh, seniors can call the Senior Center and make an appointment. Um, and you get a ninety uh, minute appointment, you bring your tax documents and your tax return is actually prepared for you during that time. And so you wait at the library and you get, um, you can answer questions and they will help you prepare your taxes. So this is going to be offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please call the Senior Center at eight six oh six five eight three two seven three to make an appointment and get some tax help.
Thank you. Sean?
Uh, no updates at this time.
Heather? No updates either.
Okay, okay, so that, move on to Selectmen Action. Um, and our first item is a tax refund request. And ask for a motion effective January ninth, twenty twenty-three to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, the next item up is a donation from Ron Perry for the Police Department. Do you want to, Lena, you want me to just?
Oh, sure, it's, it's, um, yeah. This one's actually a relatively um, quick one, but uh, really wonderful. Uh, Mr. Perry um, would like to donate five thousand dollars to the Police Department um, for essentially the Chief's Discretionary Fund. Um, you may recall that Mr. Perry uh, was very generous in the past and about two years ago made a similar donation and just feels really passionate about the work that our department is doing. Um, and we would just be looking for acceptance of that donation.
Okay, I think that's good. Um, I'll ask for a motion effective January ninth, twenty twenty-three to accept the monetary donation of five thousand dollars from Ron Perry for use by the Police Department. So moved.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ron Perry.
Thank you, Ron.
Uh, the next item is, I asked about this, is um, a donation from Garrity Asphalt to be used for the, the Community and Social Services Keep Simsbury Warm Program, um, which there was an announcement earlier this year to, to do some fundraising on it, but it's to help residents um, with heating costs and utility bills. And what I found out was if you are interested in receiving some of the funding, you call um, the Social Services Office, correct? Um, so because this is a donation of over ten thousand dollars, we have to do a motion. So I'm going to ask for a motion effective January ninth, twenty twenty-three to accept the donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming Inc. in the amount of ten thousand dollars to support the Keep Simsbury Warm Program. So moved.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is the consideration of retail sales of cannabis within the town borders. Um, so I was going to give a little background on how we got here tonight for anyone who's interested. Um, the Zoning Commission, back in twenty twenty-one, I believe around November, um, took advantage of the moratorium that was offered by the state before to work on the text amendments and changes to the zoning requirements to, to decide where, if, and how many um, retail establishments would be allowed. This moratorium expired in November and it was renewed for six months, voted on, there was, with a public hearing. This past fall, it came to our board. Up until that time, it had stayed in the purview of the land use bodies. This fall, it came to our board. We had board members ask questions about it, if we had a role, what our role was. We came to find out that A, we did, we could have a role. So there is the role of um, residents could initiate a petition at any time. The Board of Selectmen could prohibit if they so chose, or to prohibit if they so choose, which would require an ordinance to prohibit. And then we could leave it with the land use body as they've been working on it to complete their, their business, right? Um, so it's on our agenda tonight because our board, um, I feel and I think we feel, we want our board to weigh in so that um, if we have a role and want to take a role, we will take the role and if we don't, we will let it continue down the path that it's been on. Um, so what we have here, uh, George is here too for any questions. We have three options that we can take tonight and the way I'm going to do this is because we all have different views here is to try to get consensus on which option the board would like to take. Um, since we're all, it's a democratic society, we all work together, we all represent you. I think that's the best way to do it. The first item is to take no action, which is to leave what's happening uh, with the Zoning Commission and let them adopt regulations to allow for a cannabis outlet where and if they want it or to prohibit a cannabis outlet if they so choose to do that. Um, the second option is the board could prohibit the retail sales of cannabis outright, um, indefinitely. And that would mean that the Zoning Commission would need to just, I believe, George, you can weigh in anytime, just stop what they're doing and that would put that pretty much to rest. Um, and then the third option is to prohibit retail sales for a twelve-month period to kind of see what's going on out there in the state as it rolls out. Cannabis, our neighbors, other communities close by to us. A couple of things I wanted to just cor- correct in here is a petition could happen regardless of most of these options. A couple of things I wanted to just cor- correct in here is a petition could happen regardless of most of these options. If the board chose to prohibit outright, people could create a petition to allow cannabis. Whereas if we prohibit for a short period of time, um, or put a, you know, an end date on it, people could prohibit to permanently, to prohibit. So there are options out there for anyone who wants to create a petition, just put that out there. Um, George, do you have anything or do we have questions for the, from the board that we would like to ask George before I continue?
Just a quick question, I mean, maybe to Maria is, so we can't ban it tonight, but we can ask you to draft an ordinance that we would then have to have a public hearing and officially ban it, right?
Right, that's my understanding. Bob is also with us virtually. And what Bob and I and, and George have discussed is that, you know, should you decide to either ban it indefinitely or ban it temporarily, um, we will, you know, provide you all with a draft ordinance and correct you to schedule a public hearing prior to adoption.
Yeah, I just, I don't want folks to be confused because it says we would vote to ban it tonight, but that ban doesn't actually take place until the ordinance is passed.
Okay, and I think I just maybe didn't read that. Oh, it does say that, um, okay. Um, so I'd like to just get the input from the board on what they would, how they would like to proceed. If anybody would like to speak up. Uh, I'll speak up first. I would like to, um, leave it in the hands of the land use board. I am not opposed to having cannabis in Simsbury. I, our neighbors are having it. Um, I feel we're part of the community. It's legal in the state, so it's going to be here. And it's, uh, it's allowed to be delivered anywhere in the state. And from listening to the public hearings that were held by the zoning, I didn't see anything, um, that I felt made me change my position. Um, and we did hear from George that talking to neighboring communities in Massachusetts and to some of the police commissioners, they did not see some of the impacts that were projected in the meeting. So that would be my preference. Yeah, sure.
Um, when I would just like to thank all the residents, um, at all these meetings who have come out and spoken on, on both sides of this. Um, you know, it clearly is an issue that people feel strongly on, um, about either side. Um, I personally, as, as a resident and, um, elected official, am for a ban. Um, I don't think it's a good fit for Simsbury, uh, for a number of reasons. But, um, I also think that one of the common things, denominators that we heard from both sides of the argument was, um, the desire or interest for a referendum. And I think that it's important to hear our residents, uh, you know, let them speak on this, um, as a community. So I would also, you know, be in support of option C to give the residents that.
Would you like to weigh in on which way you would like to? Just determine which option we're going to vote on?
Sure. I mean, personally, I have no interest in cannabis. I don't use it. Um, I, I'm disappointed in that, um, something that, uh, while it's a certain of a concern, does far less damage than other controlled substances. And I wish we would have this much passion around overdoses and heroin and other opioids as we do on this because those, those substances actually kill people in our community. And I hope that residents and other folks care that much about, about something that is killing people in this town versus some of the perceived and, and, um, you know, uh, other issues that, you know, the Surgeon General making this a Schedule One in seventy-nine was politically motivated and, you know, it's been there ever since, but I'm not a doctor. It's, uh, you know, again, I, I wish we would, uh, I wish we would spend more time on, as, as the woman that came up said, on economic development and other things. So, uh, having said all that, um, I am in favor of option C in terms of letting the residents, um, have their say. Um, because, and I honestly, I'm disappointed the residents haven't already put a petition together as, I think if, if folks are that passionate, then, uh, this, this should already be something that's marching towards a, a ballot referendum as, as we talked about at our last public hearing, so.
Thank you.
I am, uh, somewhat in a unique position because I actually was living in Colorado in two thousand and twelve when, uh, cannabis was legalized there. And so I got to see how this rolled out. And even though I think that, uh, in Connecticut, we are positioned, it's not going to be, um, we're not going to have the growing pains that, that Colorado had where it became a, a huge tourist, uh, attraction for, for people to come. I mean, there still were lots of consequences to that rollout. And, uh, this makes me, um, even though I support the overall legalization of cannabis, that's not the question that's before us now. The question that we're being asked to decide is whether we want a recreational retail store here in the town. And I think that having a store like that will cause there to just be more cannabis uh, in town as a result. And having seen some of the things I saw in Colorado makes me want to be very careful before we introduce this to the community. I support option C because I feel like it's going to let us take our time, see how this is going to work in Connecticut. It's brand new here. We can look to our neighbors here in this state, see how it's working in this state before we decide whether or not we want to adopt it, as opposed to looking at other states at other periods of time and trying to extrapolate how we think it's gonna affect us here. We can just take our time and do this. And I also think that time will allow for, um, the residents to be able to, uh, move forward with a referendum. And, and personally, I would also love to see a referendum happen because I think that's, uh, would be the best answer for us to hear from our voters and, uh, and, and have everybody have an opportunity to weigh in on it. But in the absence of that, I'm, uh, in favor of option C, which would temporarily ban it.
Thank you. I'd, uh, I'd also agree. I'd love to see a referendum, uh, on this. And I know from experience that if our residents are, you know, motivated to do this, this is something that could be, um, done in just a, a, a few weeks of work to gather these signatures, because I know that it's an issue, um, that people have, uh, passionate opinions about. I have, you know, a strongly held, uh, belief that, um, most things, whether it's a, a product or, um, or a service or activity, if you wanna make that safer, you don't ban it, you legalize it and you regulate it, uh, you know, stringently. And I think that's what the state of Connecticut has done, that's what Massachusetts has done. And I think that we're in a, a, a position where we can look at what's happened in Massachusetts, talk to police chiefs there, talk to other elected, elected officials. And, um, we don't have to speculate what's gonna happen here because it gives us, I think, a pretty good, uh, comparison. Um, so I would like to see the zoning commission continue, um, the, down the path that they, um, have started. And, um, and I would not be in favor of us, uh, banning the retail sale here.
Chris?
Uh, thanks. I, it's interesting. I think that it's, that I'm speaking last and I think the board, my fellow board members recognize that. I've probably been the one who's most impassioned behind the scenes, canvassing and talking to each of you. Um, I think that, um, um, I think it's, I think it's a mistake. And I'm disa- disappoint, I think it's a mistake that we don't address this issue. Uh, that's what we were voted for, we voted into office for. The, the, I, I don't, I don't, um, I don't fault anyone for how we started on this journey together and, and the direction we put, we put it into. Um, but I think we weren't really thinking deeply about it initially because it was this con- it was this conversation sort of happening out in the, uh, sort of a nebulous area and, and as, 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 as happens often, we're looking at something else or our attention's captioned over here. But all of a sudden, this thing some, seemingly came upon us really quickly and we were, thought we were dealing with it. So, and I think it was out of, a little bit out of sight, out of mind. And the guidance initially was, let's have this looked at as a land use issue. And that, to me, the way we presented to the, to the zoning board was, um, as if it was a tacit sort of, um, subconscious approval that we were appro- we were approving of the concept of retail. So go figure out for us where we want it in town. And I think that's sort of how this, the ball started to move and I, that was a mistake, I believe. Um, and we burdened the zoning board for the last two years with a project that I should have, that I think should have been ours. And I, I, I wanna apologize to Mr. Ryan and to hi- his fellow, um, teammates for all the work they've put into this, which again, I think something that should have belonged and, uh, at this board's level. Because this is not a land use issue. It is a policy decision. It is how, it is something that would have changed the definition of how this town looks, feels and acts about who we are, what we stand for. It's not about do we take this sliver of land and convert the zoning guidance on it from residential or to, to retail. It's not about do we make the decision to, um, to interpret wetlands in a different way to make a project work. It's literally something that has never come before this town before. It's making, in that kind of decision, it's a policy basis, it belongs to this board. That's why we're here. That's why I'm really impassioned about it, but I, I don't fault anybody for their personal opinions. I have no problem with the concept of recreational, uh, marijuana. I certainly don't have a problem at all with, uh, those folks out there who seek it for medicinal purposes whatsoever. But going back again, back to the concept for me about policy base, that the, the state government made a decision to, uh, first decriminalize. I think that was the first step. They did decriminalization first. And then, excuse, first we approved medical marijuana, okay? Then we, that's a policy decision. Then they decriminalized the possession of marijuana. That's a policy decision. Then they voted to, uh, and then the general assembly recently voted to make the decision to consider the retail cannabis. That is a policy decision. Neither of the three of those were land use. Then the fourth thing they did was, okay, folks, towns, it's up to you to determine whether or not you want retail cannabis or not. That, to me, is just a continuation of a series of policy changes, not land use. So I think that we should have followed that thread. And I, I do again apologize for all the hard work that George and his team and, and, um, Dave and his team. And if you went to those meetings, and I'm glad that I asked for, I'm glad that we asked for continued conversations because people came out and we learned. I learned from Lori, I learned from the doctor, I learned from, I've learned from those folks in town who use it for medicinal purposes and get, you know, get untold benefit from it, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about recreational retail cannabis. And does that comport with, and someone used that word comport at a zoning board of appeals meeting. I was like, that's the word I've been missing. Does this comport with who we are as a community and who we are as a board? And I always think, okay, the decisions we're making, are they adding or are they subtracting from who we are as a community? That's kind of the filter I always first, you know, think about things through. And I think about sort of the founding, the core tenants that this board stands for, which are safety, culture, education and economic development. Those are the, for the, the four that I look the lens through. I think that, so I go adding and subtracting, safety, culture, education, economic development. I've canvassed many law enforcement, uh, uh, officers in our community and in other communities. I've canvassed the folks who represent our culture activities in this town, our social ser- including social services. And I've canvassed educators and I asked, I've asked all of them as, as, will this help you on your mission? Or does it, will it take away? And none of them came to me and said, if this is helping us on our mission. I mean, like, this is what I'm here to do. It's, I'm, I'm here to make policy changes that add and the, and move our, our community forward. And I don't think that bringing retail cannabis adds to the, our public safety, doesn't add to our culture's, uh, mission. It certainly doesn't add to our educational mission. Um, and I, and I would pose the question of maybe does it bring a cost? I don't know. Because there was all those people saying the what ifs, and I remember all of us saying, we can't work with what ifs. But I have, and my gut, it tells me it doesn't necessarily add. I won't ever say it subtracts, but I don't know if it adds. And then the economic development, the gentleman the night, other night that spoke and Lori, he was asked to speak. That's why he had a little longer time. Okay, so we, we, we were, we were seeking knowledge and information to help us make this decision. I appreciate you guys hang, hanging in there. I don't know if my time on this board, I will ever be able to participate in a decision this important. And that's, that's, that's important to me as a human being, as a citizen, and as, and as a child of this town. Um, so economic development, um, let's, let's put a number, uh, let's put a number that, uh, ro- grosses three million dollars, okay, of sales in this town. After the, as the gentleman, gentleman from Fine Federal City kept on using the word, uh, dissipate, dissipate, dissipate. Probably the reason why we're not, they're not looking at Simsbury is they don't think it's a very viable market. So dissipate, dissipate, dissipate. That's, things settle down in hysteria and then things settle into it as the true market. Probably have the highest retail, highest rent of any possible retail location in northern Connecticut, which brings the cost of the product up. So if you're a massive commoditized commu- uh, consumer of that product, you will most likely buy it where it's least expensive. Like most other vice products, people don't look for the most expensive vice-based products if they're commodi- if they're heavy consumers. Recreational consumers, like, you know, like myself, don't care what the cost is. I'll try, I'll drive wherever I have to drive for it. But I can, I bet after dissipation, I bet you out to the cost of the, of the retail establishment, security that's gonna have to go in there. Maybe three million dollars. Three percent of three million dollars is ninety thousand dollars. That's what this town will get from it. I guarantee you that ninety thousand dollars will be eaten up somehow, some way in some sort of subjective cost for our, for our poli- our public safety. I hammered our public safety folks tonight about trying to ju- justify adding more police officers. I wanna add them for the right reasons. The same thing for social services and same thing for education. I'm not that ninety thousand dollars is worth it. What I would rather have Simsbury be recognized for, I'd rather support Cure Leaf and other folks like it. I'd rather put, make us the gold standard in the, in the world for cultivation of medicinal marijuana. Bet on that. That's the kind of economic de- development we should be thinking about. That's what people are looking at. Not whether we should get ninety thousand dollars of tax revenue from a retail cannabis store. I mean, that's the person I'd rather be thought about. Um, and we, uh, the last thing I'll, I'll leave on is that, that, you know, part of the sell, the policy change was that, for the policy base was to potentially right the wrongs of a failed, of, of failed policies of the seventies, eighties and nineties, uh, in our, in our society. And how could we return monies to those communities? I think the best way that this town could potentially be a participant to that is not to allow retail cannabis so that the stores are opened in the communities that are, they're intended to support, drive the revenue there if that, if we were to, if we were to believe that justification. If we really wanna be holistic about a community, base it upon that premise. Don't take potentially from those towns that were disenfranchised, potentially add to them. So my, um, my preference is number one, that we outright, no, excuse me, no, number three, two, whatever it is. Number two, you guys are in a story. Number two is outright ban this. But I know that from my, from, from the conversations that have been over and over that there are, there are board members here that won't go that route and I don't believe that'll pass. But I, I will not accept this going back to the land use body. It's, it should stay with us. So my best option for getting a consensus is number three. But I don't believe that twelve months is long enough. I believe if we should go at least twenty-four or thirty-six to really see if this is something of any value to the town of Simsbury by getting real definitive data from experiences from other towns. There is no reason that we will not suffer from going into this more cautiously. We will suffer for going into this too quickly.
Thank you. Um, so heard from everybody, uh, just a couple of things. Um, it was brought to us as a policy. Chris was a champion of that. Um, the options in the state law was to leave it to your land use board or potentially have your council or members vote on it. Um, most of, I'm just gonna reference our neighboring towns. Most of them did leave it to their land use boards. Did not vote on it at the board or council level. Um, ma- majority of the state's municipalities did follow the land use option. A few communities, most recently in the November election, did have petitions and Litchfield was one of them to allow the voters to speak. So, um, there is a varying degree on what's happened across the state in this area. And I do just one other comment on the, um, revenue. We don't know how much revenue that would be. And, and I'm, you know, people are sneezing at ninety thousand dollars. That may not be a lot of money. It could pay for something if the impact is not that great. But I also look at the amount of money that would, is gonna go to the state of Connecticut, which we are all of. That I hope that somehow we get to participate in some of that extra funding, whether we contribute to it or not. So, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion for option C, which seems to be the predominant, um, feelings of the board. If somebody would like to make that.
I'll move effective January ninth, twenty twenty-three to temporarily, temporarily prohibit the retail sales of cannabis in Simsbury for twelve months under request, um, of the town manager and town attorney, the preparation of a draft ordinance prohibiting-
in a request, um, of the town manager and town attorney, the preparation of a draft ordinance prohibiting the temporary retail sales of cannabis in Simsbury.
Second, someone?
I would second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is there a chance to move that out to a longer?
That was what I was just going to ask as well. Is that an option?
Move it out to twenty-four months.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the twelve and we can take it up again and do it again. I mean.
Let's, let's see if this, what the votes are on this, right? Fails, we can put out a new motion.
My only reason, I mean, and again, Chris, I mean, and I don't want to get into a, a huge debate here, but, I mean, the policy decision was settled at the state. It's law that it's allowed. So to me, it is a land use decision. What is or isn't sold in town? And I'm supporting that if the residents want to ban this for twenty-four, thirty-six forever, they have twelve months to do that. And I think that's, that's more than adequate time for the residents to decide. I'm not passing the buck to them, but, um, again, this is one of the most talked about issues I've seen in my twelve years up here. So if folks don't want to see this in the community, then, then please get the required signatures and, and put it on the ballot. I'm not saying I'm going to vote to legalize it in, in twelve months. Um, I may very, very well continue to prohibit it. Um, but, you know, at this point in time, I, 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 this is what we have, um, referendums for. So, and if there are impassioned folks that want to see it, I encourage them to get the required signatures and make it legal as well. Um, you know, I believe the question can go either way. So, and if it's that important to folks, uh, I would hope they would exercise their right to, to petition and to, to force a referendum.
So we, we have the motion on the table. I do have one question for discussion for George. What happens to the work that the zoning commission has done?
You're talking about retail cannabis. And so, um, if there is, if there's no effect on your vote on the other uses, cultivation, manufacturing, packaging, those kinds of things, I suspect the zoning commission will continue their work on that portion of, um, of, of the draft text amendment. Um, I understand, I'm talking to, to, to the county attorney, that if you're, if, um, the board select and take this action to prohibit indefinitely or for a period of time, um, I, I suspect that we might recommend to the zoning commission to spend act, to spend act, to suspend action on there on the text amendment related to the retail, but that will be up to them.
And then if, at the end of the period, the year, this could be a bottom question, the one year, if there is a petition that we know that that would supersede to, if there's a petition to prohibit, if there's a petition to allow, um, and then do we, we put the ordinance in place after the twelve months? If there is no petition, do we have to come back here and vote again? What happens?
Again, if your, if your ordinance has a, has a time limit on it, uh, a, a one year or a two year timeframe, then, then yes, I suspect it would expire.
So then it would be.
Yeah, you, you would have, you would have to amend the ordinance to extend it.
Bob, my understanding is that if there is a referendum that, that, or not a referendum, if there is a petition, then, um, that would go on the municipal ballot in November. So we would know the results of that at that time. And then that would be, would that, that would give us enough time to know if we need to take up the, the ordinance sunsetting.
Yes, I mean, yes.
Essentially would, would supersede the ordinance then.
Yeah, that's correct because, um, think of the petition as a petition to hold a town meeting, which is essentially what it is. The town meeting action, which would be vote by machine, would be a supervising legislative act in one direction or the other.
At that point.
I think that's the way the statute is, is set up to give the public the ability to petition an action which supersedes the action of a local legislative branch.
So the twelve month sunset would carry us through November, which would take care of if there was a petition?
That's correct. Unless, I mean, unlikely that there was an appeal of the, um, legis- uh, of the referendum, which doesn't happen that often, but you could deal with that at the time. But yeah, you have plenty of time between the election day, call it November fifth or whatever it is, and in January twenty-third, um, two thousand twenty-four to take whatever action you needed to take in response to the, to the referendum.
Your options are on the table also.
So can I, can I amend my own? So, uh, and here's, sorry, hear me, hear me out. Um, I was just thinking, there's going to be a new board elected on, on November, whatever, that would be seated on the first Monday of December. And I don't think, uh, thirty days gives that new board enough time if there is no referendum to settle this issue. So Chris and Heather, I'd be willing to meet you guys halfway and if we did eighteen months to give the new board time to settle um, and decide in the event that there is no referendum. So that, again, it's not, it's not having to be done in twenty-seven.
No, I appreciate that because again, again, I, as Eric knows, I, I, I've, I've acquiesced considerably uh, on this issue in order to be a collaborative board and to, and try to work, uh, with other folks on this board. And I, I, I'm more than welcome to, to continue on that, right?
I'm on my own motion for an eighteen months, um, eighteen month prohibition.
Okay, um, any further discussion on the amended motion to extend the prohibition for eighteen months? Um, all those in favor say aye. And all those opposed say nay. Um, so, um, that passes.
Can I, uh, can I interject something here? The motion calls for a draft ordinance, which we could certainly provide to you, we intervened two weeks between your meeting. Would you like to set a public hearing date for that draft ordinance?
Just logistically, because we have had some challenges, uh, within the last year with the current failing to post some of our legal notices. We have been trying to give ourselves a, a little bit of breathing room. So you'll notice we've probably done a lot of our public hearings where it's not the very next meeting, but two meetings out, again, just because of the challenges we've had with the current. Um, so perhaps, um, Bob, you know, we could do that for the first meeting in February, uh, which would be be thirteen.
Yeah, that, that's, um, very, very realistic.
So you want a motion to set a public hearing on February thirteenth at six P M? To consider the ordinance of an eighteen month prohibition on, uh, cannabis sales in the thousands. I am.
Okay, one second. Um, all those in favor say aye. Okay, um, just, thanks, Bob. One other reminder is we also have on the table, um, we still need regardless of prohibition of sales. We have a work group that is going to just look at the smoking and use of cannabis and cigarettes and vaping in town in public spaces. Um, so that's out there. Okay. Get back to my agenda here. Okay, so now we have appointments and reappointments. Okay, we have a long list of appointments and reappointments to the boards and commissions. They're all, are they all the same date?
First page they are.
Yeah, they're different dates, so I guess I could. One question I just want to ask. I know that there's police commission here and I know, um, that the, we have Eric Lemke is re- is, um, recommended for the police commission. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that there's no conflict. He's an active duty police officer. If there's any concerns. Not in the town of Simsbury, in the, in the city of Hartford. Um, if there's any concerns of any conflict of interest and that if there's any potential conflict of interest, would we see that he would recuse himself um, from any decision making? I don't know if that's something.
So Bob, from a conflict standpoint, obviously, all folks that are elected or appointed would have to follow conflict of interest, right? And then recuse themselves is appropriate?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just if there's any concerns in that area, that would have to happen. Okay?
That's fair, fair point.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I asked for a motion to approve all the people on, as presented on the, this sheet from the RTC, uh, is this though?
I think it's everybody.
Oh, everybody, from the RTC and the DTC, recommended for whatever the terms are that are on these sheets of paper.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Mark, I didn't read your name. I'm sorry. You're on. Yeah, um.
Yes, reappointment.
Oh, re- oh, those are the reappointments. I'm. Yeah, I, did I cover everybody by saying that? Okay. Thank you. Good. Thank you. I like that one. Um, Ruby, any changes to the minutes from December twelfth? Any changes? The minutes stand as presented and, um, at looking for, oh, there's no executive. Oh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.